Good evening. Welcome to the September 24th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. I want to call this meeting to order and we'll have our customary moment of silence. There's a lot going on in the world, so whatever is in your heart, please take a moment of silence and think about that. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Are there any special actions today?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. That brings us to our first round of public comment. Please state your name. If you're in Newtown Township, we'd prefer that you go first, please.
Good evening. My name is Chet Zaramba.
Could you turn the microphone on? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chet Zaramba. I'm a 55-year resident of Newtown and surrounding burbs. I've seen a lot of growth, a lot of development, much of which I have opposed, but I realize progress is necessary. I've been president of Newtown Gate, not Grant Newtown Gate, for the past 12 years, and I have come here on behalf of a very irate resident population. I know some of you personally. I admire the job you do. It's not easy being on a board where you're getting peppered all the time with people like myself, so I understand where you're coming from. But I was taught as a young man when I was playing football many years ago, you don't change the rules of the game midway through the fourth quarter. And that's what I and many other residents in Newtown Gate perceive is being done to us in regard to the parking situation on Fountain Farm Lane. I have, and I've spoken to this with Kyle, I put a call into Phil, it's not an issue, and I've heard all about this lines business. People in our community cannot park on the courts because there is township approved, no parking signage on all the courts throughout the townhouse community. Therefore, where do we park? People have been parking on Fountain Farm Lane for the past, God knows how many years I was here when they built Newtown Gate. I had a run-in with an individual who was dating a resident of ours and parking on Fountain Farm Lane. His big trailer, tractor trailer, whatever you want to call it, used to haul other vehicles. But with a little research, I found out, I understood why he wasn't getting ticketed after I called and many residents had called. He was, he's employed by the township, which I get, okay. But no tickets, okay? There's a double standard here. I don't like it. 300 and some of my residents don't like it. We don't want new rules thrown on about lines. I don't want to hear about lines. Those lines have been there for 20 years. People have never been ticketed. All of a sudden, you come now, and I, when I say "you," I met with the police, a very, very nice gentleman, I think the lieutenant of the police department, and I realize the squeeze they are in, because they're getting it from our side and your side is pushing the other way. You don't change the rules of the game in the fourth quarter. If you couldn't ticket the tractor-trailer driver, for whatever reasons, you don't ticket my residents for nefarious reasons, okay? We have had, that is the only outlet for parking throughout the community. Where are you going to have people park? If they live in Newtown Gate, are they going to walk across the bypass, park in the giant parking lot, and then walk home? I don't think so, and I don't think any of you would do that either. So I'm here on behalf of those people who have been fine and have paid tickets, are in holding as far as tickets go, to say this is unacceptable. We are taxpayers. We contribute handily to the running of this township. We shouldn't be treated like second-class citizens because it's politically convenient to start trying to get people off Fountain Farm Lane. I don't like it. My residents don't like it, and you are all intelligent enough to know it's not right. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? I've heard from other residents that they don't like the parking on Fountain Farm Lane, and I've heard that the Pennsylvania law states you cannot park, you have to have all four wheels within the fog line. So I think in the past, no tickets have been issued, or very few, for anybody parking there. But after this gentleman came here and other people complaining about it from your neighborhood, you know, I think the police upped its surveillance. And I saw actually one car getting ticketed on being parked on Fountain Farm. So basically, what I'm saying is we're getting two conflicting requests from people in your neighborhood.
And I understand that. I get that. But... Believe me, as president of the board, I get conflicting
I don't want to have a back and forth.
...arguments all the time about barriers and sundry issues. The issue here is, and many of our residents complain, why, when we ask the township for help with the speeders on Fountain Farm Lane, we get maybe a policeman one day and then nothing for the next two weeks. Maybe somebody gets ticketed for speeding on Fountain Farm Lane, and then we don't see the police for God knows how long. We've requested speed bumps to slow down the traffic on Fountain Farm Lane. It's an argument you can't win because you're always going to have a conflicting he said, she said. Point I'm trying to make is, all those months, we had a tow truck parking way over that line where cars would have to go all the way in the oncoming traffic lane. Nothing was done about it, and I personally called the police half a dozen times demanding that this guy get ticketed. Never was done, okay? I've also talked, Kyle, we've had some conversations about speed bumps and things like that. We've seen nothing. So now, all of a sudden, people are getting ticketed. When they haven't been ticketed in 20, 25 years on that road, it's just not simply fair. It's not right. And if you're going to make a rule, come out, get signage up along Fountain Farm Lane, and then prepare for an onslaught of residents demanding to know where they can park. Since they can't park in the courts, and now you don't want them to park on Fountain Farm Lane, you come up with a solution that is viable for over 300 residents, tax-paying residents, and I'll step aside. I'm just a representative of these people. I don't know who came to you, John, about they're against people parking on Fountain Farm Lane, but I can tell you, as president of the board, I've gotten far more calls about ticketing than I have about people shouldn't be parking on Fountain Farm Lane. Far more. So I just, listen, and I know, I personally think you guys do a great job. I've been in Newtown Township, like I said, 55 years. I've seen the growth. I've seen the traffic. It's becoming crazy, and I think a lot of you would probably agree with me, and I realize you can't stop progress. But this is not, in my opinion, the way you treat your residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello. Can you hear me okay? My name is Carla Jones. I live at 225 Oak Ridge Drive, and that's in Langhorne in Summit. So I've said before, you before, talking about the intersection of Summit and the going over to Newtown Gate. And nothing has changed. We're in the same situation. The cars continue to make a third lane out of the shoulder of the road. People continue to cross over to Newtown and Newtown back to us. And it just really troubles me that down the street, one block, Wawa has what I'm asking for. And I don't understand, the logic in my brain doesn't understand, when we have the shopping center where we are, many shops that people can come to, places to go out to eat, et cetera, and people cross over using their bicycles. They cross over using the strollers. I've watched a man cross over using his walker. I've watched one cross over using a cane. I mean, people are crossing back and forth, and I know the township did do a study, and I thank you for that. I just feel like it's just, nothing's really happening, and I don't understand, this one block down, where there isn't the traffic that we have, they have what I think we need, would be appropriate. That right turn lane, that on the shoulder, that's not stopping. That's become the norm. And when people turn on the right-hand side, well, also, the people that are going to cross over are standing at this point, the road is right here, and that there's no, they're not even, I mean, they might stop, sort of, kind of. You know, there's not a light there for them, and they're just making that turn. I don't, it just doesn't make, I just want to know what I can do to support the township. I'd be happy to meet with PennDOT to express a resident's concern. That is just for people to know in the audience. That, thank you so much. That is the part when you cross over from Newtown right at the beginning, is Newtown property, as I understand it. That's why, it is Newtown property, so that's why I got involved. I present this also to Newtown Township as well, so I'm trying to bring the two towns together. I think it'd be fabulous to be able to get some sidewalks on the Langhorne side, we could all cross over, you know, vice versa. You come to our place for dinner, we'll go to your place for dinner. I just think there'd just be some nice options. I just, I don't understand how, one block down, they had that happen. And the, and I know engineers are very bright people. They're very logical people, I, you know. So I just don't understand why this is just, like, not happening. So, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say that Wawa, that was part of the deal with Wawa, so that's why it was done. They did it. I understand what you're saying, and I'd love to help you, and
I understand
We're talking about it.
Right. I understand that's how it works. I get it. I'm asking just to apply logic, safety, you know? I just, I'm astonished, I'm seeing the light, following the rules, and we have a box, the famous box, you know? And you can tell who lives here and who doesn't live here, because I feel like the residents who know the terrain, they tend to abide by the rules of the box. But when you put in Double Woods Road as well, the people think that they had the stop sign. They think they stop once, that they have the right of way. They don't have the right of way. So there's just, there's a number of factors over there that I think that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. There's no minor approvals tonight. Brings us to reports of committees. We have the Planning Commission here, Peggy Driscoll. Please come up.
Hi, good evening. Planning Commission, we met last Tuesday night, September 16th. The first item on our agenda was a PRD variance for Oppenheimer at 16 Armstrong Circle. The applicant is seeking a PRD variance for relief of a rear yard setback of 23.25 feet to build a one-story addition on his home. The commission recommended that the board grant this variance subject to compliance with the review letter of Remington Vernick dated September 8th. Next, we had two land development applications. The first one was for 211 Upper Silver Lake Road, preliminary as final plan. Bryce McGuigan represented the applicants, who are seeking the subdivide of 5.11 acre parcel into approximately three 1.5 acre lots to build three single-family homes that will take access on Kirkwood Drive. The applicants indicated that they will comply with the review letters of CKS Engineering, Remington Vernick, and the Bucks County Planning Commission. The commission discussed a waiver request seeking to eliminate some sidewalks, crosswalks, and handicapped ramps at the intersection. The members had some concerns about granting these waivers. The applicant's position was that the required sidewalks would not connect to existing sidewalks, and the crosswalks do not align with opposite streets. But some commission members noted that the township has been attempting to add sidewalks in recent years. The members did not have a recommendation, believing this should be a question for the supervisors. We recommend that the board grant preliminary as final land development approval for this plan, subject to a board decision on the waivers for the sidewalks. And lastly, we had 98 Upper Silver Lake Road's sketch plan. Justin Genati of Dynamic Engineering and Michelle Bach of 1784 Holdings were in attendance to review a sketch plan for a proposed mini-storage facility at the site of the former TD Branch Bank. The bank building will be demolished. The commission reviewed the plan, which proposes a three-story building with up to 800 storage units and one apartment for a caretaker, manager of the facility. While the storage unit is a by-reight use, the ordinance does not permit a dwelling unit in combination with a business in the LI Light Industrial Zoning District. The commission did not have any objection to most of the variance and waivers to be sought for this use. The members agreed that the use was appropriate for the site, would not impact traffic, and would be sufficiently screened from the bypass. There was a lengthy discussion about the proposed manager's apartment. The commission voted five to three to recommend that the board support the sketch plan and take no position at the zoning hearing board for possible variances sought. The members who were opposed to the apartment favored upholding the current ordinance that does not permit the combined uses. The members who recommended that the board take no position on the dwelling agreed that round-the-clock presence of an employee on the site would be an enhancement to the site's security and in keeping with the site clean. And that was all we had. Any questions?
Yes, I have a couple for you. The three-story building, what would the height of that building be?
I think they needed a variance for the height. It was three stories. I'm going to pull up my review letters. We had quite a few review letters. The engineers. First of all, the use is, it is in the LI district, but the combined use, it's considered, a storage unit is considered an industrial use and is not permitted to be combined with a residential use. It's 800 units, which we thought was a lot, but apparently, it's, it's, it doesn't look like a storage unit. They're very state-of-the-art now. Most of the units are only eight by 10. They only have two loading docks. I think 12 were required for loading docks in the township. Big enough for, I guess, a van to back in and unload. There were a lot, a lot of variances. You know, we were concerned about the steep slopes. Let me, I got a lot of...
I mean, would the height be over 40 feet?
I think, was it over 40 feet, Leanne?
I think it was 42.
Yeah. Yeah. I know it was only a couple feet over the height.
I mean, we don't have, we have a whole industrial park, which is, there's no building there close to being 40 feet. So I understand what you're saying, but... And in regards to the residential aspect, isn't there a storage facility probably behind this one that is being
There is an existing right next door to it. Now, and that was, that was probably, I don't know, 12, 15 years ago that that went up. But when they purchased that property, there was an existing home on the property, which I believe had historical significance, so it had to stay.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it's...
Is it occupied, or?
It is occupied. I don't remember. Do you remember, Leanne, if it was a caretaker, or do they just rent it out? I think it was a caretaker that lived there.
Okay. But that, that building there is separate from the storage facility, the one that you were
Yes, it's an old stone house. When you go down Upper Silver Lake Road, it's, I believe it was built in the 1700s, and it had to stay on the property.
Okay. Now, there's, there's another storage facility on, is it Terry Drive, or I forget which?
There's the Cube that's on Pheasant and Penn's Trail
Yes, yes.
On the corner, there's a storage facility.
Okay. Is there any, is there anyone living in an apartment in that facility?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Now, is this going to be, and I'm sorry, maybe you've gone over, I'm sure, at the commission meeting, but is this going, going to be surrounded by a gate that's only accessible by, say, a code, which I think the Cube is, basically? So after hours, there is some sort of security without a person being there, that they would have to punch in a security code to get through the gate?
Yes, it is, they, we do require fencing around it.
Okay.
I'm looking on Leanne's letter here.
I don't think they discussed that, did they?
They mentioned a fence. I don't remember if there was, I'm sorry to jump in here. They did mention having a fence,
Fence around it.
But there wasn't a discussion on a code or anything like that.
Okay. Well, because if it's good enough for that place, and they don't have anyone living, I understand you're saying there's a safety aspect there, but there's also a danger to somebody living there. If somebody did want to break in, who's the first person they're going to go after? It's the person living there. But if there's a coded fence, they still need a code to get in. And I don't know if anyone's done a study on how many people go into these places after hours. I'm sure some do. But if there's a coded fence, they get in, to me, that's a form of security. You don't need a person living there.
I believe they all have that. Just not anybody can pull in there and drive around. I believe there's some kind of security,
Right.
Probably a code they have to punch in to get in their access. But they do allow 24/7 access to it.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's cameras everywhere and so on. So I mean, this, this, I don't know, one apartment for a caretaker-manager, to me, seems, is not necessary.
And it's not a permitted use there. In conjunction with the industrial use and the residential, it's not permitted use.
Okay.
How high is the storage unit that's on Pheasant Run? Do you know?
The Cube?
Yeah.
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know.
That looks like four stories. Would you remember if that is true?
It could be.
I think it's four stories. I keep jumping in, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I mean, there are a lot of variances that they're asking for. I have letters from Bucks Review. I mean, Leanne is, there are a lot of, they're probably going to have to come back and see us again. A lot of variants are requesting.
You mentioned the 800 units, which I think is a lot of units also.
We thought so.
Was there any mention of cutting down the number
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
Those units are, what, 10 by?
I think the largest was 10 by 20. Some of them were 10 by 10.
800, that's a lot.
800. I mean, they said some people come in and rent 10 at a time. We asked them what people do store in them, and mostly, it's just furniture. She said some people rent
10 at a time.
10, 15 at a time. And they did, they said, you know, we thought it was intense, and they said that they believe that there is a need in the township for that much storage.
Yeah, people need to put their junk somewhere, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there were, there were, there's a lot of variances that, you know, they're asking for, taking trees. You know, we like to see any large trees remain, and, you know, there's a lot of trees that they want to take down. Taking my, they need to, I know I had something in here from, I think the Bucks Count, I'm sorry, I'm just, I got a lot of review letters here. They want an excess, they want steep slopes, they want 12 loading berths are required, but they're only asking for two. And they want to not require a physical barrier measuring at least six feet in height, and they said the proposed use will meet the screen buffering requirements.
I tend to agree with Mr. Collaboral on the need for that apartment, and frankly, it seems like a dangerous situation. I wouldn't want to live there in a single apartment in that building, and the 40-foot limit, I thought, had to do with the fire department being able to get access, and I'm pretty sure that apartment would be on the top floor somewhere. You know, so that person, whoever's living there, the caretaker and his family, is that how it's going to work, or?
Well, we asked if it would be a single person, a family, and they didn't seem to have an answer for that.
No, they don't have an answer for that.
I mean, another question we had was, you know, is somebody going to be living there with children that are going to be using the schools and?
Yeah, you know, it's sort of unprecedented, isn't it, to ask for that? And then, my concern is, we're setting a precedent.
Absolutely.
And that, I think, has been haunting our ordinances and regulations for a long time. We set precedents, and then somebody else wants to do the same thing, and all of a sudden, we're just allowing everything. And so I would be opposed to that, basically, that use.
Well, as I said, a residential use combined with an industrial use is not permitted in the township, according to our ordinance.
Well, you guys also said we shouldn't take any action on it, like send a letter, but we can still do that to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board would have to decide that, is that correct? And do we know when that's coming up for the?
No, I don't believe there's been a zoning hearing board application. This is at the sketch plan
Yes, sketch plan.
stage right now. This is the very, very earliest. There's not even anything to formally review, so this has got a long way to go.
Probably when I'm long and gone.
They'll be back. You know, they come in and they ask for everything, and then we review it, and we'll see what they come back with.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, you have any questions about the proposed sidewalks at Kirkwood? That was a big...
I personally think that's the way to go, so yes, I'm personally for that. I was at the planning commission meeting. I saw the whole thing. I think it's needed, but everybody else has to weigh in on that as well.
Well, there are no sidewalks on that side of Kirkwood Drive. They are on the other side. And there are no sidewalks on the, that would be the west side of Silver Lake Road, but, you know, over the years, we have waived sidewalks sometimes, and then down the road, we were sorry that we did. And who's to say that in the future, sidewalks, some sidewalks won't be constructed on Upper Silver Lake Road? The applicant feels that they're sidewalks to nowhere, but, and aesthetically, they could look nice, too.
I agree. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, brings us to reports of board members. I was not planning to say too much tonight, and then I saw an article in the Patch from the borough about the fire services agreement. And they pretty much, we thought we were negotiating in good faith, person to person, not in the public, certainly not in the Patch, but that is certainly not what we saw. And I just think it was very inconsiderate of them to do. I just want to point out that they have an over $2 million police department, $2.1 million police department, yet they are loath to pay $275,000 a year for fire coverage. I don't, I don't understand that. And they want to rely on something called mutual aid. Mutual aid is where you give something and you get something. Well, they don't have anything to give. and you get something. Well, they don't have anything to give, so they're under this false impression that people are just going to show up from other places without a contract. And, uh, it's very disheartening to see that they would take that out in the public before we finished our negotiations. So, again, we are asking for $275,000 a year for three years. They wanted security. They wanted a three-year deal, and we weren't going to do that, but we did. We also brought down our price from $304,000, which is, through a lot of, of, of number crunching with the fire department, was a fair number. But they sent us a letter, uh, telling us that a three-year step program that they preferred, and, uh, we did not prefer that. So every single supervisor up here authorized Dennis and I to give them a $275,000 for three-year number. And now I don't know where we are, because, again, they said it all in the patch. They said they didn't want to pay it. So, again, we're kind of back to, you know, square zero. So we're supposed to have a meeting on the 30th, and we'll see what they say, but we're not moving from that number. You know, there's no way. It's a fair number, and they can afford it. They have to raise taxes, so do we. Um, that's the way the game goes. And, uh, so I just wanted to enlighten everybody as to this issue, because they put it in the patch, and I have to respond. That's all I have. Dennis is not here. Mr. Mack?
Yes, thank you. Um, on, uh, September 16th, I attended a seminar sponsored by the Middletown Environmental Advisory Council, and, um, there were representatives from the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority talking about, uh, the waste treatment, wastewater, basically, and PFAS. And I'm just going to focus on the sewer system, what I learned, and whether this, everybody agrees with this or not, I don't know. But there's always been a lot of talk about the Nishamani Interceptor, and I thought it was the, some kind of machine there, but they're talking about it as a pipeline, which they've been repairing, replacing, and, uh, on the order of 35,000 feet. Are they going to be doing that? They're going to replace the whole Nishamani Interceptor pipeline down to Ben Salem. Uh, and they're going to, uh, expect to bid this out in the spring of 2026. The other thing I learned was that, um, analysis of flow rates showed that on wet days, up to 75% of the water in the interceptor is rainwater, while only 20% is actually sewage. Now, I know in Newtown, we have a separate sewage and rainwater, uh, system, so it's not likely that rainwater gets into the sewers, uh, way, in, in Newtown. So there are other towns that feed into the Nishamani Interceptor. Um, so, you know, that was something that I learned, and, uh, I, I don't know, you know, how reliable that is, but, uh, there were, seems to be engineers in the audience who knew what they were talking about as well. The other thing is, I had my fifth Meet Mack Monday Zoom meeting this past Monday, and I covered a lot of topics, including the Summit Trace Crosswalk. Uh, I didn't get much into what Carla Jones was talking about regarding the turn lane. And while I was more than a block away from there, it's at least a mile, I think. So in any case, I, I understand what you're saying. The only issue I had with that, and I didn't want to really discuss it much, was who's responsible for that turn lane? I know that you are thinking it's, it's Newtown Township, but perhaps it's Middletown. I don't know. Uh, that has yet to be worked out, and maybe the, um, our engineer will have more to say about what's been done with regard to the pedestrian safety study, uh, when her turn comes up. And that's all I have to report.
Mr. Calabro?
I'm not a good one.
Mr. Davis?
I'm a good one.
Okay. All right, there's no public hearing tonight, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Uh, I'm going to offer the consent agenda as a full, uh, yes or no vote. Um, if anybody wants to bring anything out of the consent agenda to talk about, you certainly can do that. I think it's pretty, pretty cut and dry, but, uh, before I offer this, does anybody have any questions that they want to direct to Leanna about the fuels program or Lower Doolington Road Trail certificate?
Well, I have questions about...
I have questions about the bills list. It's minor questions, it's not...
Yeah.
Uh, some things I don't understand, but I saw on Card Member Services, page two, uh, I guess those are not TD Bank? I know that Mr. Calabro will be there when they destroy that bank for the storage facility, but...
That's correct. Those are the new credit cards with Penn Community Bank.
They're still from TD Bank?
No, no, with Penn Community Bank, our new bank.
Oh, great. And on page 14, uh, under Remington Vernick, Newtown AOP, August 25, $11,527.81. I didn't, I, I don't remember, recall what AOP means.
Uh, that's the Toll Brother property next door. That's an escrow payment, so...
Oh, okay, great.
Stands for Orchidias, he's a Philadelphian.
Good on you, Dave.
And the last thing is, uh, Gorski Engineering Incorporated, Incorporated on page 14, invoice design services, site analysis, flow plan, $8,000. What's this about? Anybody know what that is? What floor plan? Analysis of what?
You're putting me on the spot.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Catherine.
Glenn may have the answer.
Hi, I'm Chief Foresight from the Fire Department. I'll take responsibility for $8,000. Um, that is the engineering firm that we hired to do the study for the new firehouse.
Oh, right. There you go.
Uh, okay. Uh, they don't know where this firehouse is going to be, though, right?
We don't even have the plans yet, so...
They're, they're, we gave them three suggested spots.
Okay.
Uh, that's what they were working on, but I'm not sure they'll go in the three spots that we suggested.
But they can do this work before they even know where they're...
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, uh, let's call the clue. The, let's call the question.
I think we need, do we, do we get, do we get a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to do that right now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make your motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Vote passes four to nothing, four to zero with one, not here. Okay, thank you. Uh, which brings us to the engineers' report. We have nothing. Is there anything that you want to update?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I know. I read the, you know, I read your latest report, and I reported this at my Meet Mack Monday, but, uh, there were several things on there. The last item in your report was RVE and PennDOT will work to evaluate each option, meaning the two options you discussed is not to do anything and do some kind of redesign of the crosswalk, uh, following further feedback from PennDOT. And I'm not quite sure when that was done, uh, but you're still waiting for feedback from PennDOT?
So this is regarding the Summit Trace Crosswalk?
The Summit Trace Crosswalk?
Yep, so we, um, we prepared our, um, the initial, you know, memorandum and the investigation into that. We did have a meeting with PennDOT a few weeks ago to, you know, go over those options. So we are now working to come up with, um, different options to present the township with based on the, um, the meeting that we had with PennDOT. So, um, that, there's options to, you know, make improvements, leave it as is, or removal. So obviously, all of these still require coordination and things like that, so we're, we're working to present those options to the township.
So how long have you been waiting for PennDOT to get back to you? That was August 8th or something, last contact?
That was when we last met with them. It took a while to get to that point, so we're working to just evaluate that information that we discussed with them.
But you're not discussing the right turn lane that, uh, Ms., Ms. Jones was talking about, are you, in that study?
Our study mainly focused on the crosswalk aspect of it, yep.
The other question...
I'm sorry. The other question I had was, I was, I was watching Fox 29, believe it or not, and, um, last, they had a report about assisted living residents seek improvements to crosswalk in Bucks County, and they were talking about Chandler Hall. And in that, they mentioned, the township says an engineer is looking at possible improvements. Uh, have you been doing that?
Yep, so our office is looking into possible options, um, to make, you know, changes to that intersection. Um, we're working on preparing a cost estimate right now to provide that to the township. Um, you know, we're obviously in the very preliminary stages of, of looking into this. Um, as you know, anything in the future would require PennDOT coordination and approval, so, you know, we're taking a look at that initially, so yeah, there should be some more information coming to the township shortly.
And you, you charge money for that, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Is there, is, did we follow the right procedure to get you to start on that project? I know, I don't recall having an actual vote. Does the board need to authorize you to start something like that? Mr. Solicitor may be able to answer that question.
I don't recall. I don't recall.
We did, we did authorize it.
I believe there was discussion about this at the last meeting. There was direction given to the manager to explore the possibility of this.
Correct. So we didn't vote on it because we wanted, uh, Leanna to come up with some solutions or to look at it and see what could be done?
I mean, I'm not against it, you know?
No, of course.
I just want to be sure that the proper procedures are followed, and that when we have a vote, we usually have a discussion, and we allow the, uh, members of the audience for comments and stuff like that, you know, but I, I know, you know...
They're free to comment.
Excuse me?
They're free to comment.
Yes, but usually it's done while we're making a vote, and we didn't really have an official vote on this. But fine.
But that's, let me explain. It's because we have to look into what we can do without PennDOT, and then we have to, you know, listen to how long it's going to take from PennDOT. But we did tell Leanna to just take a look at it, so it wasn't, I, I'm not sure, I don't think we voted on it.
What you mean by "we," Kimisami, because I didn't vote on it. And I know for, uh, the other cross, the other project, what was the other project we were in? Chandler Hall, I think we did have some kind of vote on that, uh, maybe, or some other, some other project. I'm just curious about how these things work. Uh, you know, I want to make sure that the proper procedures followed. When money is involved, like I said, I'm not against it, so go ahead with your work, although we didn't vote on it, that'd be fine, I assume.
And if we take any action, we will certainly vote on it. But right now...
Well, she is taking action. She's doing the study.
Yes, she's looking at it, that's all.
That's action. When you look at something, that's an action.
Mr. Sanders, do you believe we need to vote on having her just take a look at what's going on over there? Because it is PennDOT, we don't even know what...
There, there are certain things, I think, that are, are nominal enough that you can give some initial direction to just get things started. If a project is opened and there's going to be more than nominal engineering billing, uh, that's coming in on it, I would suggest that the board consider authorizing it by vote.
Certainly.
Thank you for that. Well, I, I just know at the Summit Trace, um, pedestrian study, we voted on it. And that's when they started to actually do the work, after we voted on it, not before. So I'm just assuming that was the usual procedure, no matter how much work or looking at or whatever, uh, that we're going to be charged for, basically. But, as I said, I'm not against it.
John, I happen to agree with you, because anytime Remington bills us for anything, that, that's a function of us paying something. So I like to make a motion that this, what are, what are we doing here, as a matter of fact?
Well, there, one issue...
Form a motion, Mr.?
Well, it's, yeah, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
Why can't we do it under, other business?
Because it has to, you need the 24 hours on the agenda rule.
Then I, then I, I propose that Leanna does nothing until we have this on the agenda.
Okay. The direction was given at the last meeting...
Unless Remington's doing whatever her functions are for free...
No.
Then I'm okay with that.
No, they're not.
All right. Then, no, I, I say cease. Don't do anything until this is on the agenda, then we vote for it.
If that's the board's direction, then...
Do I have to make a motion for that, because it's not on the agenda?
No.
No.
Is that the board's direction, again, which is what happened at the last meeting?
Which is why I agree with you.
Direction was given for her to explore the issue.
No?
It wasn't a vote, John. It was, it was a discussion...
The chairperson said, "We will do that. We will ask the, uh, uh, engineer to look into it." I promise you. That's almost a direct quote.
Okay.
That's all, the only person who said that, basically. So, you know, this is not a, uh, this is, requires a, a majority vote, I believe. So I agree with Mr. Calabro that we could...
Okay, so, if it's the board's direction that she cease work on the Chandler Hall crosswalk and the Summit Square crosswalk and any other crosswalk...
Not the Summit Square we gave, we voted.
That has not been authorized by a vote, then so...
We authorized the Summit Trace Crosswalk study and the work she's doing for that.
By, by vote of, of the board?
Yes, definitely. So let's not confuse things and stop everything.
I got it.
I think, I think we've, uh, seen how long it can take for a crosswalk to get built. I don't think we should slow it down, in my opinion. If it's reasonable billing hours, I don't think it's, uh, the administration can approve. I think, I'm not, I don't think she should stop. My, my opinion.
I think Micah just gave direction as to, just to take a look on the maps and see who owns what road and all of that. But I hear everybody, and we'll do it as you suggest. But we'll talk about it with Micah and see.
Can we, can we commit to get it on the next agenda at least?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One item on our report this evening, uh, would be, uh, the adoption of a resolution to approve an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Newtown Borough for the Newtown Creek Pedestrian Bridge Project. This has been long in the works. Um, we have a consulting, uh, engineering company, Howell Engineering, that's doing the specs and trying to move this forward. This agreement, uh, merely memorializes the agreement between the township and the borough for the township taking the lead, uh, because it is the grant applicant and the grant awardee, and, uh, taking the lead on managing the, uh, project and, uh, billing the borough for any costs that are incurred. Uh, if the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to adopt a resolution to approve this agreement. If the boards of a mind, it would be a motion to adopt a resolution to approve this agreement.
Do we have such a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second? Everybody have a chance to read the resolution? It's pretty cut and dry. We're just doing what we already said we would do to partner with them to create the pedestrian bridge and the sidewalks leading up to it.
The authorization also says...
Before we get into discussion, is there a second?
Yeah, there's been no second yet. That's correct.
I'll second it so we can discuss it, okay?
Go right ahead. I got things to discuss too.
But the resolution also says ongoing maintenance, which could last forever, and I guess that money that we got from the grant is going to run out. So at some point, it's going to cost us perhaps money.
Just to be clear, the funds from the grant only cover the construction of the bridge itself. There will certainly be, as it referenced in the resolution, a separate maintenance agreement for going forward. That's not what we're talking about tonight.
But that is in this, that is in this resolution about maintenance?
Correct.
It is.
You're going to have to maintain it at some point.
Well...
It's a trail and bridge project.
It doesn't have to be in this resolution.
Okay.
Because it says the work is covered by the grant, and I just heard that the grant is not covering maintenance, so it shouldn't be in this resolution.
Okay.
The maintenance is not included in here.
It's included.
Now, it says, "The agreement shall not be renewed upon completion of the bridge project, the borough, and the township shall enter into a separate bridge maintenance agreement," the last item there.
I'm sorry, it doesn't say that?
Yeah.
You're talking about the number nine?
Number six, the very last thing above the signatures.
Okay, forgive me, I'm old, I can't read, thank you.
Yeah, not sorry.
I have a question in regards to billing, Section 10, which basically puts the billing and any extra on the onus of the borough, I mean of the township, of which we're to invoice the borough for payment of whatever we pay. Now, we just heard a mention by the chairwoman in regards to the borough wanting to pay us for fire service, so I don't have much faith in the borough paying us back. So I'm not voting for this because I just think there's too many holes in this Swiss cheese. And again, when there's extra work that has to be done in regards to engineering or anything, whose engineer does it? Is it a separate engineer? And who does that engineering company bill? Do they bill the township? I thought this was a 50-50 deal, of which the borough should be billed half of what the bill would be. Again, I'm sorry. I love the project, I think it's a great idea. I just don't trust our partners.
I'll second that. Anybody else have any comments?
Can I vote no, even though I seconded?
Well, I initially firsted it, so, yeah, but what he says makes perfect sense. You know, their credibility is a little in question right now, so he's right.
I do like the idea of the bridge. I do have concerns about it costing the township taxpayers more than I think it should.
Yeah, we haven't even gotten into landscaping and, you know, maintenance of landscaping. There's a lot more.
Yeah, it's always been my concern with the project. It sounds like a great idea, linking the communities and making it more walkable, but I just really have concerns about the costs.
Okay, so we had a motion, and we had a second. So now, we've had discussion from the board, so I'm going to, any discussion from the public?
Hi, Carla Jones, again. I'm trying to understand, because I think it's important to understand the situation, back to Summit, probably the most dangerous place...
Wait, wait, hold on, ma'am, excuse me.
We're talking about the resolution for the bridge.
Oh, so sorry, I can't make any other comments later on?
No.
Second public comment.
Yeah, we haven't got any.
Oh, great, I'll wait there, thank you.
Any other discussion from the public about the bridge? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of saying yes to this resolution, please say aye. Hearing none, all opposed?
No.
Anybody abstaining? Okay, motion passes to not pass this resolution.
Oh, the motion fails.
Motion fails.
That concludes our report, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Four to zero with one non-present. Okay. Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fund balance tonight is $5,688,939.09. The plan expiration report is before the board with no action required, and Chief Forsyth is here tonight to give his monthly report.
Good evening again. Before I get my report, I have with me tonight Deputy Chief Rory LaRosa. Rory has been with the department for about 15 years, and he's our deputy chief in charge of the volunteer side of the fire station, so I just wanted to welcome Rory here with us tonight. Our monthly report for the month of August, we had 146 calls for service. We completed 70 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township, two use and occupancy permits, and one fire alarm. In Newtown Borough, we completed 10 fire safety inspections, and that was it for the borough. August, I noted our highlights. We did several camp butt downs for Park and Rec. We have a great relationship with the Park and Rec Department. Chief Weaver and I attended a Board of Supervisors meeting on August 13th where we authorized the hiring of two firefighters. We greatly appreciate that. Those two firefighters were sworn in on September 11th, and I believe they'll be sworn in officially here on October 8th. So thank you to the board for hiring two more firefighters. Chief Weaver and I met with Gorski to get them started on the plans, and that was the question that Mr. Mack had tonight. We are moving forward with plans for a new fire station, so you'll see a couple more bills coming. Hopefully, we can get something in front of the board soon so that you see what our plans are, and hopefully, we can get it done before I retire. I'm hoping. As I said, Nick and I met with the two new candidates for the position of firefighter, and they have been hired, and they did start on September 11th. August 28th, we investigated an arson fire at Roberts Ridge Park. We've had a couple fires there now that we are working on, trying to find out. They are suspicious, so we are working to try to find out who our culprits may be in that situation.
Is that around the bathrooms?
It's really hard to explain because they're setting fire to the trees, so that's kind of what we're looking into right now.
Okay.
August 28th, we attended a water rescue training and awareness at Court Creek Park with Langhorne Middletown Fire Company in North Hampton. And on August 31st, we had a pretty serious garage fire on Waterford Place. And other than that, that's my monthly report for August. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Chief, a couple questions for you. If we were not to do Newtown Borough's inspections, how would they do them?
I would imagine they will have to hire a third party to do them.
Okay.
Or they won't get done, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, if they don't get done, are they in violation of not having an inspection being done?
They have adopted the 2018 Fire Code, so they would be in violation of not doing the fire safety inspections.
Okay. But we do all their fire inspections, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, there were only 10 done last month. Is that a pretty good average, or do we do more than that?
We normally, we've changed the way we do our inspections. We do them by streets now. So when we're in the borough, we do State Street. We're doing, I think we do around, a little over 100 inspections in the borough annually.
Gotcha. The other question I had is in regards to Gorski and their study. Now, you had mentioned there may be multiple sites that are taken into consideration. Are all these sites in the township?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, what? The other thing is, is Gorski also looking at the possibility of maybe, instead of a brand-new firehouse, maybe some sort of extension on the existing firehouse that may serve the purposes of, I guess, when they come in in regards to cleansing themselves of any kind of debris from a fire so that they're not bringing it into the firehouse? Is that a possibility?
Yes, they are doing an evaluation of both the firehouse in the borough and an evaluation of the firehouse here on the municipal complex.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, chief. And that concludes the manager's report, although I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our assistant manager? Hearing none, we'll go to our second round of public comment.
Hi, Carla Jones, again. I just want to express my concern and try to understand why the traffic part isn't part of the study. And I don't necessarily have all the information, but just, when I look at that one corner, the one that, where the lane has now been created by the residents, by the drivers, it's the shoulder of the road, and they just take a turn onto the bypass, which is right standing where the people are crossing. It's very dangerous. And that's why, that to me, that's part of the problem, is that people can make their right turns on red, and they're in the shoulder. It's not even a road, it's not even, it's not a lane, it has no light. So that, I just wanted to bring that back up and maybe for reconsideration, that that be looked at as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Charlie Foyer, Newtown Walk, and I'm sorry Peggy left. I wanted to express my appreciation for the Zoning Planning Commission and HARB, for all the work they've done to preserve the historic nature in Newtown. I think it's very important. I've attended meetings and listened to the situation with regard to Melange, Louisiana, on Sycamore, North Sycamore. And I believe the BOS instructed our township solicitor to issue a cease and desist order to Melange for any further construction. I think it was back at the beginning of September or the end of August. And at the last meeting, I came for public comment and asked what the status of the cease and desist order, and since then, I've attended the zoning hearing board, and the solicitor and the owner of Melange, Louisiana failed to show up, although they had an application and a reason for that board to meet. And so, not having gotten any answers on that, I sent in email requests under comments at Newtown PA for tonight's meeting, asking what the status of the cease and desist order is and the ability for the township to enforce that. And I also asked if this restaurant is clear to open during construction. These are discussions I've had with a lot of people in Newtown, and there are a lot of people particularly interested in this and the preservation of our historic area in Newtown. So, did I do something wrong by emailing in the questions and not hearing from our solicitor or in tonight's meeting on, or the board, on what the status is of this restaurant on North Sycamore? Thanks very much.
I'll just say, they haven't rescheduled with the zoning hearing board, so when they do, they're going to have to follow every rule, or else they will never get a certificate to open, so...
Okay.
It's a long way for...
Thank you. What's the status of the cease and desist order that we issued?
They're ceased and, ceeded and desisted.
They're ceeded and desisted, and they're not constructing, and they cannot open until they comply with the application and approval process.
I believe the cease and desist order was for external construction, not internal. They're still doing work inside, as far as I can tell, by driving by there, but they are not allowed to open. I don't think so, they...
Thank you.
Why don't we ask the solicitor? Do you know anything about this?
I have no, I have no idea. This is a code enforcement issue that's been undertaken by the zoning officer. Zoning officer cited this property owner for zoning violations and also code violations that are underway, that have not involved our office yet.
Okay. What does a cease and desist entail?
I don't know that...
Just one, like, just one wing of the...
A cease and desist is governed by its own terms.
Isn't it a complete, isn't it a complete cease and desist?
Maybe. I don't know what this particular cease and desist was for. If it was for external repairs only, then they can do internal repairs while the cease and desist is litigated or resolved in some way by compliance.
So if they are repairing the inside and do not have a cease and desist for the construction, the refurbishment, remodeling of the inside, what's to stop them from opening up for business just on the inside and not having anything to do on the outside?
I have no idea.
The short answer is they don't have a certificate of occupancy, Phil.
Okay.
So they would be, if they were to open a business without a certificate of occupancy, regardless of all of this...
Okay, does a certificate of occupancy have to entail construction on the outside of the building because the occupation is on the inside?
It has, one does not necessarily have anything to do with the other. You need to be authorized to operate a business in the township, which is what the certificate of occupancy does, and if you don't have one, you cannot do that.
But it doesn't prohibit them from not doing any internal work?
Not necessarily, but at this point, there's no way in which we would issue a certificate of occupancy, given everything that's going on.
So, in essence, where's the punishment?
They can't open their business?
Well, yeah, but they could fix the outside real quickly, and now the inside is all done. They could open up as soon as they got that certificate of occupancy. We're not stopping them from doing anything. They'd have to get a certificate of occupancy whether we issued a cease and desist or not. They still need a certificate of occupancy. What we're not doing is, we're not stopping them from proceeding to refurbish their inside, from getting it ready for opening. So really, what are we doing? What obedience do they need to do for us if they just continue to do the work?
We're going to hold them to accountability as far as they put in, they put in windows they weren't allowed to put in. The total of those windows now and the signs are up to nine, nine. We don't allow that, and so everything is going to be done to stop them from opening.
Well, I understand, and we're talking a tough game here, but if they're inside doing refurbishments, how tough are we? How tough is our cease and desist order? Not tough at all. Why, we're stopping them about windows? I mean, which could be done, all they got to do is take the double panes off and have single panes. I mean, we're really not accomplishing anything in regards to punishing these people. We did more to stop the Borscht Belt Deli from putting a lit sign in their window than we are doing to these people who went out, demolished stuff, and we're really not holding their feet to the fire.
We really didn't, Phil. We did the same thing with the Borscht Belt. We cited them for zoning violation, and they came to the zoning hearing board to seek relief. These guys filed an application to the zoning hearing board but never showed up, which means they don't have their relief, which means they can't get a certificate of occupancy until they get their zoning relief, because right now, they have illegal windows. If they're not violating any codes, any building code provisions for what they're doing inside their building, we can't stop them from doing what they want to do inside their building. But they can't... but they can't get a CO, they can't get a certificate of occupancy until they are in compliance with zoning, and they're not in compliance with zoning right now. So they can throw as much money as they want on the inside of the building, but right now, they're not going to open until they get their zoning.
And I agree with you, we can't let them get away with this, because if they get away with it, then somebody else is going to want to get away with it, and we're just not having it, so, right?
No, I understand what you're saying, but from my thought of this, they are getting away with it.
And there are other businesses getting away with violating directions from our zoning officer about the number of signs that's relating to the Borscht Belt, because there's a pizza place, there was a Quiznos or whatever, Hoagie place, they get multiple signs in their window, as well as others, because I, the only one that's obeying the seven letters that went out to all those businesses over there was the bookstore, and she complained very loudly to me that she's the only one that had to take down all her signs that were in the window, and meanwhile, you still have these other businesses that have multiple signs in the window, so our zoning is becoming discriminatory, okay?
It's a matter of enforcement, John, you have a code enforcement and zoning officer to handle that work for you.
Well, I guess, do they have a fine, and how do we find?
If they're found to be in violation of the zoning ordinance, there can be a fine, it's a $500 fine, it could be a $500 fine for each day that the violation continues if they're found liable for it.
Well, I don't think we're enforcing that, I mean, I love--
That's a discussion that the board has to have with its code enforcement department.
I love Quiznos, I get, is that what it's called, Quiznos? I get Hoagies there all the time.
No, we don't have a Quiznos.
No.
What is on the-- Primos.
The Primos, you thought, that's good, but you may be going to a Quiznos, we don't know.
There's many places, but do we have a, did we hire a different zoning officer because we didn't have one, is that correct?
So we do have a third-party zoning officer, I'm happy to bring this matter to her attention again, and have them take a look at the signage in Village South.
Oh, there's many, I mean, the Mattress Warehouse has those flag signs all over the place and--
If you would like to provide me with a list of areas you would like them to investigate, I'm happy to do so.
I think we should relook our sign ordinance, which can be done, I hate to say, at a work session, we could discuss this, we've done it before in the past, but I mean, there's a business right on State Street, or Sycamore Street, I'm sorry, that hasn't even opened yet, that has multiple signs in it, it's the New Indian Restaurant that sits there vacant with all these signs in their windows as to whatever their specials of the day is, but there is no special today because they're not open. Why can't we send, why can't whoever is the proprietor of that establishment be fined even though they're not operating because they have multiple signs hanging in the window?
We can start, as Catherine said, if you let her know that, because you found an example of a violation, she will send your zoning officer out to follow the procedures for enforcing the zoning ordinance, which you cannot just fine them and say, "You violated it, you owe me $500."
Well, then it's so noted right now.
Well, it's so noted, it has to be noted in a zoning enforcement notice that they have 30 days to appeal to the zoning hearing board, if they appeal, the zoning hearing board hears it, if they don't appeal, we can go to court, but that takes time, and we hopefully get a judgment against them, and again, that's where the fines can begin, but there's due process, and there's a procedure to be followed, and it all has to start with the zoning officer.
But once they went through all the land development, aren't they supposed to follow the procedures that are in that--
But that's a different, different side of the ledger, land development just allows them to build their thing and use it, the sign ordinance is what says what signs they put up, so you've got to enforce the sign ordinance separately from the zone.
Isn't there something in, when we approve something, isn't there something in that provision that says how many signs they can have?
Not necessarily, they have to follow the zoning ordinance provisions.
What are we approving? If there's no sign, we could say we have multiple signs?
Phil, yes, they have to comply.
Ah, geez, Dave, I can't believe this, I'm sorry.
Every use in the township has to comply with the zoning ordinance, they can have their use, they can use it, they're allowed X number of signs, and X square footage of signs, if they don't comply with that, it has to be enforced by the zoning officer after the fact.
Well, then let's get the zoning officer out there, because they've--
That's, I agree with you.
They've been approved, they should have signed something that said how many signs they're allowed, now they have multiple signs in the window, and we're not doing anything about it.
You know--
But we do penalize other places that may have multiple signs, I remember we had a Subway store here once that couldn't put in, you know, their $5 subs, a sign in the window, they had to take it down, so we have a place here, just because they're not in business right now, doesn't mean they can't be fined.
Totally agree, they can be, and the zoning officers should start enforcement proceedings against them, we're on the same page.
And we're in a bad way as far as somebody going out and looking at all that, because there's so many things to look at that I don't think one person can handle it all.
Yeah, the zoning officer does not go out in the car and drive around the--
Right, you have to be reported.
It gets, complaints come in, somebody says, hey, they have this, they have, somebody says they're in violation, somebody says they're replacing double-hung windows with single-pane windows, well, that's how the zoning officer gets the word that there's a problem, and then it's the zoning officer's duty to go out and enforce the zoning ordinance.
So if I went out there at this shopping center where the Borscht Belt is, which by the way invited us to a special luncheon, if I went out there and looked at all the businesses that had more than two signs, who do I report it to?
You report that to Catherine, and Catherine will get the zoning officer to go out and enforce the zoning ordinance.
We pay a lot of money for that zoning company, zoning officer company.
If you want them to start driving around looking, it's going to be even more money, they're going to be in by the hour.
I'll drive around and look at them.
All they have to do is ride around the shopping center, so why do we have to pick out the 50% of the places in the shopping center are doing things illegally?
It's been a problem for a long time, and I know notices were sent out, I know letters were sent out, I know that Shaw Shaw was put on notice, the owner, I know that Brixmore was put on, they've all been notified, it's all been enforced, but it's up to your zoning officer to follow through and take these actions to finally put a stop to it.
So basically, they get a violation letter and they ignore it?
Well, it should then go to court, John, it should then go to court. They either comply with it, or they don't comply with it, if they don't appeal it to the zoning hearing board, then it can go to court.
Everybody knows, we don't go to court, we're afraid of that, so.
I'm ready, willing, and able anytime, John, but it's got to be done right, the procedure has to be followed, and we've got to be in a position to be able to do it, and we're not there yet.
Anybody else, old business, new business?
Some business, if you turn on your microphone, you'll hear an echo, feedback. I thought we solved that problem a long time ago.
I've been in discussion with our AV coordinator tonight, we're going to work on that.
It's a pain in the you-know-what.
We'll endeavor--
I go to Middletown, I saw you in Middletown, and they work perfectly, they don't have any problem with the audiovisual system, it's beautiful, beautiful, we got garbage.